First item of business tonight is item one, Route 522 Carter Water Reliability Study by CHA. Joe, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, I'll let Robbie do that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, this is Stevie Steele with CHA. Eric Anderson here tonight. Steve's going to go through a presentation of the routes and talk about some of the different options and the costs associated with it. And then if you have any questions.
Counsel, appreciate you having us here again tonight. At the last meeting, you guys left CHA tasked with coming back to the table with some proof that this project was actually constructable and to nail down a final path so that we could evaluate various things like property acquisition needs, constructability across the river, under 66, et cetera. In addition to that, we have also taken a hard look at how the project will be paid for because even if I can convince you tonight that it's constructable, that's only part one. You're going to need to know what impact it has on the rate structure and how we would even go about paying for it. So I know there's a couple of new council members. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, but I am going to speak briefly about the history of the project, then the routes evaluated, the route that we have chosen to recommend, go over some of the constructability information, and then lastly, our recommendation for paths moving forward. This, as always, is very open. If you have questions as I'm moving through the presentation, you will not mess me up by stopping me and asking. Sometimes it's important to get the thought out before you forget it and forget why you were going to ask the question. So by all means, interrupt me if you want to. So the quick history, in 2011, the contract was signed with Dominion Power. There was two pieces to that contract. One was an upgrade to the Guard Hill Pump Station, which has been fully completed. All of that contractually has been satisfied. The next piece to that was providing a redundant water line to the Dominion Power facility. That's what we're talking about tonight. In 2013, Panone did a hydraulic study and recommended what we're calling the Morgan-Ford Route, and the water line costs at that time were estimated at $92 a lineal foot. I have that piece of information in there for a reason, and you'll see here, the last one, I want to just give some reference to the amount of time and what impact that has on what things cost. In 2014, contract water rates were in effect and the Guard Hill Pump Station upgrades completed with Dominion. In 2017, we began the reliability study and recommended a parallel water line. At that time, the concept, I believe, council accepted, but we were a little bit on the fence about where that parallel water line should be and whether it could be built where it should be. And so that's kicked off this 2019 feasibility study, and the purpose was to decide on a constructable, cost-effective, redundant route. Now, water line costs, a mere eight years or six years later, have climbed to $165 a lineal foot. I say that because council needs to realize that, and this is not just in Front Royal, everywhere that we're building projects, the cost of doing that is escalating at almost 10% a year. I don't know how long that's sustainable, but contractors are very busy, and so as you keep that in perspective, when we talk about how long it's going to take to get this project to construction if you decide to move forward.
Was the $92 a square foot a low point? Was that, because that was right after 2010 dip, housing 2018, 2010, 2012. So was that, is that a normal dollar amount up to that point? In other words, is that the amount of inflation that we should be seeing at $162?
I believe there's a combination of those things. One, you're right, it was right after the bubble burst, so that had some impact on that. But the contractors that were able to stay in the game, they lived through that. Now it's a contractor's environment because the barriers to entry for, I won't say the new generation, it's a lot of work to start a contracting business. It's long hours, it's a lot of risk, it doesn't really appeal to the new generation folks, and that's not good for taxpayers, us, because competition is not as it should be. And until that climate changes, we're kind of stuck trying to find most cost-effective ways to do things. But 92 was, was very, 80-92, we saw that for, for a long time before the bubble hit and a lot of the contractors got ran out. So going over the routes that were evaluated, you can see this map, and every color represents a different route that was evaluated. And the full loop option, Morgan's Ford, is the one on the far right side of the screen, and it, for the most part, it is the one that doesn't include using any of the existing town water line. It is fully standalone, it runs way out into the eastern part of the map there, but as you can see, without being an engineer, it is about three times the length of water line. So in keeping with our goal to find a cost-effective way to do that, that one was discounted. The two section lines, and I call them two sections because all of these options utilize at least some part of the existing town water line system to make the full redundant route. Again, trying to find the most cost-effective way to get this project built. And those are the four different options you see, Benny's Beach, Mary's Shady Lane, the parallel option, and the electric utility. So we'll start with each one and just do a quick pros and cons for each one. The Morgan's Ford and Benny's Beach are both completely redundant, but they're too long to be cost-effective unless you find a way to generate new revenue, i.e. new water users, increased water rates for existing, et cetera. They're also hydraulically inefficient because they connect two tanks that have different elevations. And so when you do that, you've got to do something to burn off head, you've got to keep one tank from overflowing the other, you get moving parts. All of those things equal inefficiencies and higher costs to operate. The Mary's Shady's, Mary's Shady Lane option is also completely redundant. It utilizes existing access roads, it doesn't have a whole lot of benefit over the electric utility route, but the river crossing location is riddled with cave and geotechnical issues that we just don't feel comfortable trying to push through. We have a very good geologist who is nationally renowned at this very activity, and he was very uncomfortable with where we would be crossing the river, and that's specifically one of the things that council asks us to make clear. The parallel route, and this is the one that is pretty close to what is already across the bridge now. It's simple permitting, few easements to obtain, it's probably the most constructable across the river because the river's not very deep right there, it's very similar in cost to the electric utility route. The cons, already is not truly redundant. It's also very close to the existing main line that crosses the river, and the one thing we talked about is why are you going to have a redundant line if both of them are right beside each other, and if something happened, they both get damaged? That doesn't, that doesn't meet the definition of redundant. Also, existing easements, one would think that you could use easements that are already in place for the other line, but if we want to get them far enough apart that they're safe from both being damaged, then we can't use those easements anymore. We're going to have to get new ones anyway. It also doesn't go anywhere where there is planned development or growth. So with that parallel option, you still would have to build spur lines into some of the areas that you have already identified as potential growth areas. Also, if you open cut, we still would have to do some aquatic studies to make sure there's not any lizards, perch, log perch, and the list of things that make it tough to open cut water grows exponentially by the day. The electric utility route, which ultimately is the one that we're recommending, is the shortest route available. It does serve new potential developments, it's hydraulically efficient, it requires the fewest easements because we're utilizing town property, county property, the FNR Limited Partnership property, and a few private owners. The cons are, it is going to be a fairly difficult river crossing and more difficult than the parallel line because it is about 12 foot deeper where we're planning on crossing with the electric utility than it is where you would cross using the parallel. All of these options, with the exception of the one that is the furthest east, include these red lines, which close up loops and, or make, create loops and get rid of dead ends that exist in the system now. So we talked about this earlier for new council members. We're trying to create two separate dedicated lines to that blue dot at the far top of that picture. And so by closing up those loops, utilizing existing water line, which is the blue, we cut costs and we still get the two redundant fees all the way to that end. So let's talk about the river crossing options and constructability. Open cutting, the river depth makes open cutting for our chosen location nearly impossible. A Cawfle Dam would be nearly 12 to 14 feet deep, and any kind of rain event that the river would rise, you can imagine it would flood it every time. So not, not, not an option. Permitting, again, could require aquatic studies. Horizontal directional drilling, cost elements increase risk on you guys and the contractor. And permitting likely to require extensive geotechnical investigation. To, just for layman's terms, hydraulic, horizontal directional drilling, they put in a head that has a drill on it, and it burrows through the ground. They have some control to make it go left, right, up, and down, but if it hits an open cave, it's gone. And this is a pretty cost location. So while that is a much cheaper option, we are recommending the most expensive option, but it is also the one that is the least amount, or least, has the least chance of failure. It works, this is called micro tunneling. So it works in cost topology, it's preferred by the permitting agencies because it does not mess with water or the aquatic life in the water. It requires a shorter length, the shaft dewatering work is extensive because essentially they're, they're going to build a column, an open column down into the ground on both sides of the river, and then they're going to put a micro tunneling device in there that grinds up the earth, and then there's a return hose that blends that into liquid and then pumps it back out. A filter catches the solids out, the water goes right back now, and so it recirculates that water over and over. It is recommended by our trenches expert, and I don't want to discount the HDD option. I think, once we get closer through some of these other things that we have to do before we design, we take a serious consideration to give the HDD folks a shot at bidding it. And then council can see what both options are going to cost. If we're only a couple of thousand under, an HDD is still very risky. I would recommend that we go with the fail-safe, spend a little extra money, and do it once and do it right. Just some thoughts, some thoughts moving forward. So our recommendation is the electric utility route with the looping lines that we show in that section one slide. The cost for the electric utility route to get across the river and to the point where we would be looping, 7.2 to 10 million bucks. The section two looping, 1.3 to 2 million. Total project cost range, 8.5 to 12 million. And everybody's probably asking me, what, how can you get away with that? You're an engineer, everybody can do ranges. At this point, we have done, or do diligence to see what's constructable. The next piece would be finishing out what we're going to call preliminary engineering report, where you would have much more detailed costs, and that report would be sent to the health department for their approval before you can do anything. So the $12 million range, we feel pretty confident it will not exceed that number, but if every contractor in this area ends up with no work when we bid it, they could get pretty aggressive and get down to that 8.5. So for planning purposes, unless there's questions about the constructability, and I'll still answer questions after that, the next piece of this presentation is to show what council, I imagine, is going to ask me next. All that sounds great, how in the world are we going to pay for this? So assuming that that is information that is important to council, I put together the following slides based on a $12 million project, assuming the $3.5 million in funding that's coming from Dominion Power. And the reason that I say the loan would be $11.3 million, the way that the contract is set up between Dominion and the town of Front Royal, they pay $700,000 of that $3.5 million during the construction phase. So as invoices come in from the contractor, each month, they have to pay $58,333.33. This project's 12 months long, 12 times that number gives you the $700,000. So the town does not have to borrow that because Dominion has to front that $700,000 during construction. The remaining 2.8 million comes in the four following years as an annual lump sum payment each of the four following years. And I'll show that here in a spreadsheet. So for the $11.3 million loan, 30 years, 4%, annual payment is $653,000 a year. So just so council understands what these next numbers are telling you, this December, the rate for Dominion goes to one and a half times in-town rates. What that results in is an additional $275,000 in annual revenue at the current usage. I have not estimated any additional usage by Dominion Power, so I'm assuming what they're using right now, I've held that true for the entire length of the loan. In 2024, the rate goes up again to twice in-town, which then generates another $275,000 in annual revenue, again, at current usage, to the total of $550,000 of total additional revenue coming in that is not pinned for anything else. So this is the structure that shows how this project is going to float without raising water rates for this project. If there are other projects on the docket for any other infrastructure improvements, that's another discussion for council altogether. This shows that this project, for the most part, is going to be funded fully by Dominion Power through their rate increases and through the 700, the 3.5 million that they've got to pledge towards the project contractually. So you can follow, if you want to follow the right side, I think that's probably the easiest way to follow how this works. Right now, there's 162, I'm getting old because I can't even see that. About $162,000 in the project budget now. What council, my understanding with talking with Mr. Wilson is that council has agreed to put $103,500 aside each year to go towards the project, and so when you start seeing what you have in the bucket right now, that, oh my goodness gracious. So it starts at 162.6 here, your first 103, and we're talking about reallocating $400,000 from the AMI meter budget from that into this project budget. And I think BJ said we could do that as soon as 2021. But what we're doing is loading up to where you're at $666,000 before you have to make the first payment. So when you make that first payment, Dominion is just, they're just at 275, you've got your 103 in. You can see for the first few years, when this $700,000 kicks in from Dominion, your budget and available money for the project goes to almost $2.4 million. So you've loaded it up, and now you've got that $2.4 million sitting there. If you don't, if you stop putting the 103.500 in in 2028, let's just say at that time you decide to re, you put that in different projects, another CIP project, you can stop putting the 103.500 in at that point, and you've built up enough that at the last payment, you're still going to have $90,000 in your budget. If you keep putting the 103.500 in the entire time, then you would maintain the 2.4, and when you finish making the payment, you still have $2.4 million. So there's, there's several options you can use. Bottom line is, when I boil this down so that everybody can understand, if you were going to take a loan that equals that annual payment that the town has already put in the budget, you could get about $2 million bucks. So for $2 million, you're getting a $12 million project. I don't know any other way to explain it in layman's terms. So this is the first time that you guys have seen this. If you want to adjust a little bit, ask some questions. I spent about two weeks making sure that I didn't have anything that was going to bite me on this one. BJ and I looked at it over and over. I mean, this is tight. This is essentially, again, Dominion's rate increase and the $3.5 million, it's paying for the project.
Is there, I don't know anything about the water business, but is there any chance that Dominion would lessen their utilization?
I believe that the trend for all of the power plants that are heavy water users, they're trying to find the most efficient ways to use that water. They're going to keep trying to find ways to do that, but-
Is there any risk assessment that's built into that? This is based on the assumption that they're going to continue the current utilization?
It is, but again, if you keep the 103.500 in the budget, then the cushion you keep is $2.4 million.
So this would be considered, and that best case would be if they increase their utilization?
Right, correct. I'm assuming worst case, I'm also assuming that you would like to stop putting money into this project and redirect that to another CIP project if you feel like everything's going well. If you want to, if the 103.5 is already in there and it doesn't require a rate increase, you leave it, you keep your 2.366 cushion through the entire project. If Dominion goes to half their water usage, then you've got 225 divided into 2.4 million, you've got that many years of cushion to put another plan together. So is there a certainty that Dominion will always use 180,000 gallons a day? If we had to make project decisions based on our 30-year projection, I'd be out of the job because nobody would do anything.
Are your assumptions based on Dominion not, two points, not diminishing their usage, and secondly, that the rate increases occur as proposed?
Correct. I'm assuming that the agreement is followed as it is written right now, that no change to that happens at all.
And the third item would be Dominion add on to their 3 million or whatever the magic number was, would be the third point?
That they would come to play with more?
More money.
I would, I would really recommend the town consider not having that even be an option. I mean, we're looking at a rate increase that's generating money in perpetuity, so I think it's really risky to be tempted to take a one, they wouldn't offer a one lump sum or more money if it didn't make sense to them. So it would make a lot of sense to them. When you add up this column, in 2050, they will have paid the town $15 million for water. So what, if they can pay you 10 right now to get out of that, I mean, why wouldn't they? That's a great financial model for them.
Steve, in regards to Dominion Power, has this been passed through any of their engineers because that was one of the things that they wanted to approve, whatever?
We've been keeping, I've been in conversation with Ray the whole time we developed these. He actually directed us away from an area where there were some caves that he knew of.
And the second one is the VRA load, how secure is that on 4%?
That's pretty conservative right now.
That's about what we have for the police department.
What does the police department?
Police department was 4.01, I think, somewhere right around there. It's right around 4%.
And the, I show VRA as the option because I'm sure you know, they're the easiest to get along with. They're not going to tell you you have to spend it, they're not going to give you unrealistic, like user agreement requirements. Once you satisfy their covenants, then you approve the bond, then you do what you want. And that's, that saves a lot of time and money. We can come back to that, but, so here's my last slide. What I, what I need direction from council and staff to keep this project moving. The next piece of this is not right to design, that's not how this works. We have to do a preliminary engineering report that is submitted to the health department. They give us approval to then, council will have a shot to say, okay, VDH approved this, that means they're okay with moving to the design step. So the next piece is preliminary engineering report that outlines all the stuff that I've presented to council tonight, has the cost estimate, says a little bit about how it's going to be paid for, satisfies all the Virginia Department of Health questions, they check that box, and essentially, I would come back here, present the report to council, and say that next piece is done. Now, we're to a point where we need to decide, are you going to go out for the money, what loan you're going to look for, what banks, what programs, et cetera. So the next, very next step, I need direction on whether council feels comfortable enough that they go to the PER development.
That's in June, May, June of 2020, where you're talking about going out for loans?
Yes.
So interest rates can change?
They can.
In the next year.
But there's money in the budget now to do the PER. At the end of that, we can reassess where rates are, look at it again. The town has not, at that time, then you can reevaluate whether or not things look more risky from the finance standpoint or not.
Is that, your cost per square foot, was that looking ahead of what you thought the cost would be in 2020, or are we going to be looking at probably some fluctuation in the initial cost?
We've got, that's a pretty aggressive number. 165 is higher than we are seeing right now. Can I tell you that two years from now, that'll be, I wish I had a, I wish I had a better crystal ball, but yeah, we, all of these numbers are very conservative. I don't keep a job very long if I come in here one month and tell you guys what something's going to cost, and then the next time I come in here and it's two times that. I just, I don't stay employed.
When is, when is our deadline to use the 3.5 million? I thought there's a clause in there that we have to, we have to actually execute on contracting.
I have read through that thing probably 25 times. The only comment that I can find in there is as quickly as possible. There's, literally, and I, the attorney may, I'm not an attorney, but there is no-
There's no clause in there?
Now, we did have Mr. Sonnenfeld in here representing Dominion at the last meeting, and he stated the money's still sitting there, but his, I guess his comment to me was, each year, things do change, and they do ask him every year, why are we, why do we still have this $3.5 million? this $3.5 million sitting here when we put it aside in 2011?
Didn't somebody mention that there was a clock on this? I misunderstood?
My understanding there was at one point, but Doug looked at it, I don't know, this was maybe a year ago, maybe it's, and was that? I think we talked about the clock being the risk that the town takes each year they don't build it. If something happens to that feed going out to Dominion and they start losing a million dollars a day in revenue, then they can go back and say, we put the money aside, we asked for this in 2011, it's been this many years, that's the only thing that I can think as far as a clock.
One other question is, of course, I appreciate the recommendations and the final dollars, but I'm curious to know, the other recommendations that were possible, for instance, using the bridge as a cross versus the river, is that the difference of, just make up numbers, you know, half the price at $6 million versus $12 million, but, you know, the two parallel pipes right next to each other, and we're going to spend an extra $6 million to ensure that, that, you know, that they're completely separated for the what-if scenario?
Right.
Does that make sense?
It does.
I know you can't put a dollar amount to it, but what I'm asking is the disparity of cost between the two outweigh the decision to put them next to each other?
Right. I think the, the longest route there...
Yeah, the directional bore, what's the difference there?
Uh, I would say...
You're talking about, you know, hitting a cave, losing it? But a directional bore, you have so many feet, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
So, what's the likelihood of that happening?
I think we're looking maybe as much as double the cost per foot to do the micro tunneling, but we don't have to stop and think of another method if we hit some of those cave-type geology.
You're saying we hit a cave, we lose it?
Not with micro tunneling. We don't lose it if we micro tunnel.
With the drill-in?
Right.
Lose that.
If we do an HDD, horizontal directional drill, it is considerably cheaper than micro tunneling, but the risk that you're taking in doing that way outweighs paying more to do a method that will work no matter what you hit. So, let's just say you're going to pay a million and a half dollars to micro tunnel under the river. The HDD may be 700,000 bucks, but if you get halfway through with the $700,000 option and you hit a cave, you have to pull out and you can go to the other side and hope you can try to hit that same mark, or you pull out, you eat your losses to the tune of over $300,000, and then you start the micro tunnel. That's not what I'm going to recommend that is done for that level of money in a $12 million project.
Well, this first thing is, going back to that one, is with the water there you just told me earlier, that's 12, 14 foot deep, you sure don't want to have a, hit any carcinogenic caves because you've got a major, major problem then, because it's going, it's going to cave in everything you've already done with that amount of volume of water. So, you either got a micro, the only way to get it through there is the micro. I mean, it's more money, but it's more of a sure process in getting it completed.
So, I understand...
I mean, I'm very with it, and I know it's like, I don't know how to explain it, so many feet per section that you're drilling through, you know what I'm saying? It's like 10, 20-foot sections, but I'm just... Would they do the micro, do they ground it all in afterward?
Ground around the pipe, because it's steel casing pipe, it goes through...
They do, don't they?
Yeah.
Steel casing.
They can ground around the casing pipe.
Right.
No, I think they hate to do it on the inside. You know what? There's an initial section where they're boring, and in that area, it's kind of just in front of the casing pipe, they will ground that area in, while they're doing this.
Steve, going back to your first or second slide, how much you say, 641,000?
A year for the...
How many a month?
That's a year, 643,000 annually, yes.
So, your micro drilling, you'd have two bored holes on either side of the river?
Yes, sir. It would be like, they're like manholes essentially.
Right.
They're concrete tubes all the way down to the level where you're going to go.
Then your proposal is to do the HDD from there out?
No, we would do the micro tunnel from there under, placing steel casing as we go as the micro tunnels out.
Under the river?
Correct.
But once you get past the river and this entrance and exit, then you go to the different type, and that's part of your suggestion?
Yeah. You just get open, you go into open cut at that point?
Yeah. Once you get out front of the river, then we go back underground.
How much rock there is it, almost 100% rock? Especially there in the quarry area.
There's, there's a lot of rock, and part of what we would recommend is, as some steps moving forward, and the contractors will want this, is some geotechnical investigation and do some drilling on both sides of the river where we're planning on them putting these structures. I mean, that's pennies on the dollar investment for...
Now, when you, when you do these estimates, are you including the rock, you know, most contracts will have a rock clause in it, and that's included within this 640...
Yeah, we've, we've included what we think is going to take to excavate in those rock conditions for those...
And you're estimating probably 90% of that?
Well, it's, the river's carved through a...
Oh, I know, I'm not talking about the micro, we're talking about the open cut.
I don't know how much we assume, if you're talking about like parallel with the utility line?
The open cut from, say, where we began out to the river?
Right.
You've got to open cut all that. And then, how much, how much percentage of rock are you including in that?
At this point, I'd say our cost estimate is general, but it's going to cover...
Yeah, we've got a lot of contingency built in. And if we broke that project down to using that 12 million and I took all my contingencies out, Mr. Tewal, that 165 number would be well over 200.
I just want to make sure that we don't, if we, if we consider this, that we don't get into a situation that a contractor says we put a rock clause in it that's way above the actual cost that we're looking at, because I've been through that many times before, that if you don't have a real concrete number, they'll escalate that cost just out of the sky.
Yeah, that's right. And I think what we'll, part of the PER, the preliminary engineering report, will be diving into that type of detail a lot more. So, when we get back, this is, I don't know if you want to call it a preview, this, this is trying to help to get council in the door, in the room. We spend the money to do the PER, then you're going to get a good look at this again with a lot more detail before I recommend that council goes and borrows 11.3 million dollars. That presentation might be an hour instead of 30 minutes.
Is that going to include any re-drilling as far as geotechnical work?
Yes, that money does have geotechnical work included in the estimate. And once we get those estimates nailed down and I feel good about them, that, that'll be the next thing on the screen after this PER, and you guys and gals drill me again because this is a lot of money. I got to work for a lot more years, so I need this project to be as successful as, maybe not as successful as you need it to be successful, but it doesn't do me any good to be part of a project that doesn't work. I feel good about it right now.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I still, just as an information piece, I still like to know ballparks, ballpark numbers of cost differential from the plan of crossing the bridge versus going into the water.
I think we, I can put something together for you pretty easily on that. I don't know if I can do it justice off the top of my head right now.
Are you talking about hanging the pipe?
That's what I'm saying, we never did talk about putting it across the bridge. It was always under the river.
Okay, under the river, it's got a line.
We talked a beat out of it.
They won't...
They won't let you hang it.
Well, okay, what option was the third option you had in there? It wasn't the Morgan Ford, it wasn't the Mary Shade, it was the next option after that.
Well, the first one we just talked about was the parallel line, taking Alvin Shundo Avenue and cross the river and through the intersection and all that.
So, is that not hanging with the bridge?
No.
No, that would have been...
That was cutting in the river, the only difference is, the river there is about three foot deep or there about, well, we're talking about doing this by 12, 14. Makes a tremendous difference.
So, this is the, we're calling the parallel routes, where we open cut the river, but again, this green, you can see for the most part, lays right on top of the existing line for that amount of distance. It's not redundant, if something happens, a tanker truck, I'm trying to think of all kinds of practical things that would damage that water line.
Maybe that's what I don't understand, is like, what would damage that water line?
If there was a tanker...
Besides trail break?
A tanker truck that came off the bridge, um...
That's a double river crossing right there.
Right.
You'd have to have trouble.
Yeah, that's right. So, we got to cross, and we cross it twice in this section. By going this way, you can see the fork turns into one, so we only have to cross it in one spot. And again, this, for where potential development is planned, this line is nowhere close, and that, that can't be the only deciding factor, but if you build this, you've still got to figure out how to get a line over there. This gets it away from your system, so it's out here protected if something would happen, and it gets it to the area where you're going to have to get water eventually.
But again, what I said originally, when you put a line up on where the green line is, there is no redundancy because you're pulling bolt 12 off the same...
Correct.
...section of piping.
Yep.
And you go out to the, that's a whole complete section of, comes to have a water plant that feeds another section. You've got three feeds come down a water plant.
So, I guess what Mr. Tewal said, if some of these lines were damaged, that ancillary feed this one goes across there, even if this one was there, it's dead too. By getting it to a whole nother part of the water system, there's all new feeds from the plant here, that if this, any part of this isn't damaged, then you're still able to feed water, redundant.
Well, that's a discussion we had several months ago when you first came in.
That's right.
And we turned that down because of redundancy and that looping.
Correct.
We talked about developing in the town, you could qualify to do it, but it's still not redundant.
Correct.
That's why we came up and said we wanted the second line.
That's right.
And we wanted the appropriate-sized lines, and we paid you to study the line.
Correct. Yeah, that's why that white-blue cyan, that's whatever color...
Water. As much as I hate to say we're going to spend that much money, but we're going to have to move forward on the PBR, where it doesn't matter what we do, even if we do the, we all know, parallel lines, we've got to do the PBR.
Correct.
So, you know, either way, we got to, we got to start with the PBR and then progress in fashion where we will find out more definite numbers and figures and all that before we actually do the actual...
Does this eliminate your concerns for future development out of the virgin commons area?
I haven't even considered that, yeah.
As far as the redundant line?
It helps, yeah.
It helps, but again, I'm not, I'm not ready to make any major decisions. I'm not, anyway.
Comments, Joe?
Staff recommends approval moving forward with the PBR, we can handle that in our current budget.
Internal, right now.
Right, we can take care of that, and then we come back, I guess, in August, you say?
Yes.
In August, and we'll have a better idea, and we can get down to some more brass tacks that we're assuming.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel? Move forward the P, P R?
Yes.
Joe?
Thank you, counsel, for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Steve.